Please, Mr Mayor, have you received any questions in regards to the proposal? Grab a proposal, second up, councillor Pecock.
Yes, this is the mayor, I have the votes.
Now, I'd actually like to speak as we have three speakers. Can I ask, John Hart, who actually makes a big difference?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Three people expressed a wish to speak in regards to this agreement. They are Kelly Kelly, Geoff Jones and Georgie McEvoy. We can speak for a maximum of three minutes each. And if they would like to come to the front, where we can press the council's demands. Let us start with Kelly Kelly.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Tonight I speak as a representative... Tonight I speak as a representative of Highbury Preservation Society. An action group who strives to protect the covenants on the green. We are outraged that Highbury Town Council should consider selling or leasing for 125 years the green to Sheppway District Council for £1 for the development of a leisure centre. The history of this recommendation is bizarre and undemocratic. On the 4th of November, the Sheppway District Council Cabinet proposed the green as the preferred site for the leisure centre, ignoring the decision five days earlier by their own resource scrutiny committee that had recommended the Martello Lake site. Fifteen days later, we are here. Fifteen days. Many residents of Highbury had no idea that Highbury Town Council were considering selling or leasing the green. And when informed, the vast majority replied, "But the green belongs to the people of Highbury." But it doesn't. They would say, "There is a covenant." And, in fact, there are at least two. Paragraph 2.8 of the report to Sheppway District Council Cabinet states, "Restrictive legal covenants exist which seek to prevent the development of any part of the green." Many Highbury residents were appalled by the sale or lease price of £1. Many have offered £2 to buy the green, so they may preserve it, and it is. What happened was the Highbury Town Council had to bear the ownership to Sheppway District Council, and they then decide not to build a leisure centre there. Sheppway District Council will own this beautiful space worth millions, and will only have paid £1. Neither Highbury residents nor Highbury Town Council will have any say over the future of the green then. Would, could Sheppway District Council do this? Well, given that Sheppway District Council Cabinet ignores their own resources scrutiny committee recommendations, how can we be sure that a full Sheppway District Council members meeting won't ignore their own cabinet recommendations and build elsewhere? I would ask the members of Highbury Town Council to consider these words from the Sheppway District Council report. "Restrictive legal covenants exist." Please don't even think about selling our green. Leave it to the care of Highbury Town Council for the future of the people of Highbury, and possibly apply for a building green status.
Mr Mayor, town clerk, Highbury Town councillors, I believe it to be wrong to build a swimming pool, or indeed any other building on the green, for five reasons. Number one, it is one of the few green, uncontaminated spaces we have left. It is a social space, and it is free for everyone. No one part of it is more important than another. All of it is in constant use. Diminish the space, and you diminish beyond repair the very green itself. It is priceless. Point number two, the green is covenanted land. The plaque overlooking the green confirms this by saying, "You cannot build on the land." And as I understand it, SDC accepts the illegal constraints on its use for building. But there is another point here. It's also the spirit of the agreement we must also consider. Many people simply feel you should not raid the government by building on the land. I believe furthermore that public confidence in the body politic will be affected adversely if this document is put to one side. By heritage, culture and tradition, extending over the past 160 years, the covenants have been central to the ethos of this town. And that is why we, you, must stand by the covenants. Point number three, the entire green is particularly important for our children. They all need a natural space in which to indulge in undirected creative and recreational play with minimal adult supervision. Leave the green alone. Leave it for our children. Point number four, beware of any palliative measures that may be associated with any plan that comes forward, however well intentioned. You know, those spoonfuls of sugar that make the medicine go down? Relax, I'm not going to sing. These are only rumours that I've heard of, and I don't blame the council for it, there are always rumours. But I've heard this on the streets of this town. Residential parking will be available in the area for people who live around the green. That the remainder of the green be given extra, extra, extra protection. Beware, nothing can compensate for the irreparable damage that will have been done to the green if you allow this development to go ahead. Remember, you cannot put fairy lights back on the tree when you trash the tree. Number five, my fifth point, the speed of all of this really worries me. Within a matter of weeks, we're now going from considering other options to targeting an open, uncontaminated green space in central Highbury. We could be making an irreversible mistake, and under immense pressure. My advice at this moment, councillors, is to be very cautious. It is a critical moment, and the future of the town lies in your hands. In conclusion, I wish to say this, and ask you and plead with you. Stand by Highbury, stand by the covenants, and stand by the green. I'm going to give you a little piece of advice, because I love quotations, to remind you to reflect upon the consequences tonight if you make the wrong decision. And I'm going to quote Shakespeare's Scottish play when Lady Macbeth says the following. "Ponder upon this and think about it," and she says this, and I quote, "What is done cannot be undone." Ladies and gentlemen.
Mr Mayor, town clerk and councillors, I am concerned about the infrastructure and the traffic problems. As a requirement of planning, there is an notice on planners to ensure that any proposal should not be detrimental to both pedestrian and highway safety. The proposal to build a leisure centre on the green is detrimental on both these counts. It is apparent to anyone who has run the regi-transport study that an onsite inspection could not possibly have taken place. Boundary Road, which is the proposed access and exit road to the centre, is totally unsuitable to carry the volume and type of traffic we visit. In a bid to assist you, I have undertaken the evaluation. Frampton Road and Fort Road are standard residential roads with traffic parked along two sides, and they are nine metres wide. Boundary Road, at its junction with St Nicholas Road, is seven metres wide. And further along the road between Fort Road and Frampton Road, it is a mere four metres wide. Half the width of a standard pedestrian road, and this is expected to carry two-way traffic. Coaches are 2.5 metres wide, and the average car width is 1.75. One or other will be forced to mount the pavement when they pass. This was evident on numerous occasions fairly recently with the developments to the A249. This obviously negates the possibility of accessing the centre via Frampton, Fort and Boundary Road. Secondly, the safety of pedestrians, and most importantly, the children attending Highbury School or going to the playground who currently use the Boundary Road access onto the green. They will be seriously compromised, particularly in the light of the report, which itself recognises that the vehicle access will peak between eight and nine in the morning. The peak time for footfall to Highbury School. And again, the peak time at 5pm, the time when the employees of Smith's Industry, whose entrance is only 10 paces from the proposed access, leave their site. Today, I stood on the corner and counted 42 cars leaving between 5 and 5.30. We also have, according to the report, 71 cars going down St Nicholas Road at that time, and 84 cars coming in along Boundary Road. This will be a nightmare. I firmly contend, therefore, that this scheme is detrimental to both pedestrian and highway safety. And the proposal to sell the green to Sheppway District Council to site the leisure centre on the green should be abandoned.
I'd like to thank the speakers for their comments, and to Georgie McEvoy for handing the petition, signed by over 215 residents. That's pretty, very much appreciated, considering the short time she's had to do it. And I'd like to have a proposal, second up, to reconvene in the meeting. We have councillor Owen, thank you for those, and councillor Pecock. Could I have a vote on that, please? Will agree, think of that. Now, because of the way we had discussed, it would be enough to have three speakers to start with. I'd like to actually propose, as a second up, to suspend standing orders in order to actually tilt and tantrum Julian Bond, who have given notice in advance that they wish to speak. Could I have a proposal, please, councillor Pecock? Councillor Wees, second up, could I have a vote on that, please? Thank you, yes, all agreed? Yes, thank you very much. In that case, we will suspend those suspended, and but I ask that Mr Ashley Tanton come to the front and make us appreciate it very much.
Councillors, Mr Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. As a resident of Highbury for the most part of 31 years, and having enjoyed the green perhaps every single day at that time, I feel compelled this evening to address council on a matter that is very close to my heart. You are being asked quite simply by Sheppway District Council to resolve to make land available to them to develop new leisure facilities. Whilst I understand to a very limited degree that restricted covenants exist that ought to offer a degree of protection to the green, I already suspect that these alone may not be a robust enough barrier to development. Perhaps I can call upon your moral obligations to the people of this town, and do not allow this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Tanton, much appreciated. And I hope Julian Bond keeps doing his job. Thank you.
You don't know how vain I'm going to be. Am I in favour of the poor, do you?
Everybody has a time to speak, and we disagree. But we have a right to speak. And we disagree with them, as already stated. They have a right, and everybody else in this room can have their opinion. I mean, I think they do actually show respect for person speaking here.
First of all, it's more central, so there's less distance to drive, and more people could walk it. It's also on the current bus route, unlike Princess Parade. There's little schools, especially in Highbury. It's cheaper to build on the Princess Parade as the main contamination issues. It's set within a green area which will provide users with the opportunity to enjoy outdoor activities as well as spaces. It's still needs plenty of space for the activities currently on the ground. There's not many other construction activities to complete before work can start, and then the problem is before the current programme can work. But, the only access mentioned is for residential roads, where there's a lot of on-street parking. There seems to be no provision made for access by large, heavy construction plants, and any coaches required to bus in children, small children or visiting teens. Maybe now is the time to consider a new road connecting Fish and Speech for Highbury, running by the school, the new pool.
Excuse me, please, show some respect for people who prefer to speak English.
Running by the school, the new pool, and any new development on Smith's Parky side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Bond, just go on. And this is on the motion, under standing order number 4A, number 1 and 2, proposed by councillor Paul Pecock, councillor Pecock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before I put my motion aboard, I would like to ask for this to be a recorded vote, please.
A recorded vote, I will second that. If I may, thank you. It's my councillor Pecock, he's going to be there.
Right, my motion is that this council resolves not to grant use of any of the open space recreational area known as the green for the building of a replacement swimming pool. That is my proposal, Mr Mayor.
I will second that.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to... Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sure like my fellow councillors have been deluged through phone calls and visits from local residents who are horrified that the green is being considered as a building plant. No one disputes we need and want a new swimming pool, but other sites which are already earmarked for development are far more suitable. Why try and build on our green? Why? Well, because Sheppway think they can get it for the price of a loaf of bread. Is that a reason to let them have it? The townspeople have started their own green revolution, and I do not blame them. To them, this land is priceless. Priceless because it's fiercely important to the character of Highbury. We have had to endure the loss of much of our history, but this time, the Highbury Town Council has the absolute power to stop that happening.
I'm sorry, but I'd be grateful if you would actually keep your course to the end, because councillor Pecock's trying to break the cross. It'd be nice to actually do it for the whole thing, but I could be interrupted. Sorry to be a bore, but I think that's the way we need to progress.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. People have spoken about traffic problems, and they are right. Would you put a supermarket on the green? No, of course not. Please be very careful if you support my motion. You do not scupper any other plans for a new pool. But you do scupper any chance of a huge building ruining a well-loved, well-used green amenity area that the local people have shown overwhelmingly that they do not want it built on. Thank you.
And this is going to be very dry, I'm afraid, and I'll appreciate it if people can be quiet outside and make a point. And it really is just an intellectual thing that I want to raise. I have not made a decision. I have listened quite carefully to what is said, and I want to hear the debate. So, this comment, which is a couple of three pages, has nothing whatsoever to do with how I will vote. And the point of information, really, I think I start with the definition of a covenant, which is a clause in an agreement contained in a deed in which a party, amongst other things, binds themselves to do or not to do something. If that covenant is said to run with the land, it is a covenant to which successors, owners of the same land, are as much entitled to the benefit or liable to the obligation. The document of 1853 is an indenture, and that simply means that it's a deed of agreement with regard to more than one party. The Land's Tribunal exists, and it is possible to apply to modify or discharge a restrictive covenant with or without payment. And the character of the neighbourhood is taken into account, and the circumstances, and the public interest. So, if anybody suggests an application of the Land's Tribunal, it is possible. As between the original parties are all now dead, of course, there is a privity of contract. Successors prior to 1925, and these documents are prior to 1925, must have owned the same legal level of title. Having read the papers, it's quite clear that the Corporation of Highbury and Highbury Town Council have owned this land throughout. It's never been outside the ownership of Highbury Town Council. Now, the document that we're talking about in 1852 was effectively pre-town and country planning. It's a document that is entered into by a number of people, and blocks A and D have been bought by Henry Dewsbury, Stephen Wilson Port, block B, Joseph Orton, block C, and William Ellenden, block F. D remained unsold. So if you look at the plan on the document, there is a huge area taking you all the way down to the sea and painted and covered green. So the piece of land marked on the plan as an archery, arboretum, cricket ground and bowling green was reserved by the Corporation for these purposes, or for other similar uses for the amusement, recreation or benefit of the public in perpetuity. The same would be forthwith enclosed and as soon as practicable. No part of that land there offered to be, thereafter to be applied for building purposes. Now, under the Interpretation Act, the interpretation of that final clause would be taken from the text of the document. So what we have here is a document that a group of developers are getting together with Highbury Town Council, or Highbury Borough at that time, to build substantial villas all the way down to the sea. The bulk of the document is anticipating the building of estates. It says it's going to sell the land, except what is now the green, to these developers. The development did not take place. This is where it becomes controversial, I'm afraid, and please accept, this is only an intellectual exercise, but I do feel that one ought to be aware of this because it's quoted. "There is no covenant by the mayor or burgesses." There are no words of covenant in this document, which is simply an aspiration to develop a larger area of land. And therefore, when we quote the covenants on the green, my strong recommendation would be to strengthen those covenants and to do it properly, because they didn't do it, and they didn't intend to do it in 1852. After the auction had taken place on the 12th of February 1862, there is a mutual release of covenants between the council, Joseph Orton, George Shidham, who had acquired pop F, which is now Portex, from William Ellenden. The document recites A, B and E are now vested in the Secretary of State for War, C, Joseph Orton, and F, Shidham. The council releases forever and forever discharges the other parties, one releasing each other of the covenants of the indenture of 1853 of the schedule. The parties believe each other of all other covenants, and in the sense schedule provided always that such and so much of the said conditions and terms shall remain valid and substantive and binding on such corporation. The argument, of course, is that the document 1853 did not contain the words of a covenant, and therefore, the 1862 document did not bind the council to its covenants, because it didn't enter into any covenants. The property has been registered in 2008, and in the charge of register, which I have here, there are no restrictive covenants relating to these covenants on the green. The intention behind all of this, of course, was the building of houses, and the development did not take place. Now, interestingly, in the minutes of the council that I've read, on 9th of February 1853, there's a plan for selling a portion of Beachy Outlands, and the Beachy Outlands is all that land down to the sea, including the green. applications made to the Lord of the Treasury for permission to sell the whole of the Beach Outlands now leads to John Cooper for the purposes of raising funds. The purpose of selling the land, and you'll all be interested in this, I'm sure, was to erect and purchase public baths. A bridge across the canal, making other improvements for the benefit of the town. The reason why the development failed is contained in the minutes of the 9th of November 1859, where a letter dated 20th of October 1859 from Henry Dewsbury, George Shidham and Joseph Orton say that a deed of covenants as to building conditions and the deed of 1908-1853 has caused such impediments to the use of the land purchased by them for building purposes that they requested the Corporation to join with them in cancelling their covenants, and agreed before, provided all the conditions were melded and made void. On the 8th of August 1860, the War Department purchased on Mr Dewsbury. The corporate seal was affixed by mutual release of the Town Council, George Shidham, Joseph Orton of the covenants and conditions contained in the indenture dated the 9th of November 1853. So that's the first document that's got the covenant in, and then the second one is the one in 1862. And it was all about building roads, and I suspect that they wanted an arboretum, an archery and everything else, because they wanted to establish a nice, wealthy place for what I would term DFLs down from London. And they were trying to compete with Fosden. So, just out of interest, Hardway End, which is referred to as St. End's Road, Plot B would be Range Road Industrial Estate. Plots 22, 24, 25, 26, and 28 and 29 would be the Community School, and Plot A and E is land to the western Range Road Industrial Estate. And South Road is described as Range Road. Now, thank you for listening. I, as a lawyer, but not as a land lawyer, I've always felt that people are ascribing to these covenants a power that they don't have, and my strong recommendation, irrespective of anything else, and not making the decision yet, is that the town ought to look to take advice as to how to reinforce those covenants in a modern way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, obviously, this is a very, very controversial and emotional subject. A lot of information has been put out on the social media and other places, which is not entirely accurate, and it's been a bit of misinformation and rumors. Before I address that, I'd like to explain how we've got here, because all those years ago, Mr. Mayor, when I was new on the council, it was supposed to put the swimming pool on Martellawake's. And guess what happened? Public Gallery was full of people from Westhide saying, "No, we do not want any development on Martellawake's." A little later, it moved to Princess Parade. And what happened, Mr. Mayor? Public Gallery was full of people from the other end of hide, from Seabrook, saying, "We do not want it on Princess Parade." And now we've got to the stage where we've got it here. In the meantime, between these two events, Roger de Haan was going to put on a sports complex on the South Road Recreation Ground, an all-singing, all-dancing complex for indoor cricket, indoor tennis, et cetera, et cetera. The people of Haith didn't want that. So off he goes, and he builds it in Chertan. It's called the Three Hills, and what a wonderful facility that is. And shortly after that, he tried to put a pavilion on South Road Recreation Ground. And what a fight we had there, because a finished Green application was put in, and we had to fight that. I had to go to London to brief a lawyer, because Pariser had come down and defended. But we won that, and we got the pavilion, and nobody really complains about it very much. Now, one of these...
Can we get on to what we're discussing, the Green?
No, we're not discussing the Green. We're discussing the motion, and the problem is this motion shuts down all discussion about planning applications on the Green. That's what the purpose of this motion is, and this is why I'm telling you the past history, because I think it's totally wrong that we do not have the ability, the openness and transparency of local government, to discuss planning applications. And if we accept this motion, we will not be able to do that at all. I actually did meet with the Chair and the Vice-Chair of the Green Preservation Society, Mr. Kelly Kelly, and the big issue really coming out of putting the swimming pool and recreation down on the Green was the one of traffic, and the one of opening the doors and letting the rest of the Green be built on. But these issues can be resolved one way or another. I'm not standing here supporting this application or putting it on the Green. I'm not standing here saying I'm against it either, but what I want is to have a proper, open discussion on a planning application, which this motion does not allow us to have. Therefore, I should be voting against it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it's good to see so many people having an interest in developments in Hyde. I've done my best to reply to all the emails I received personally and then forward it from me from the town clerk. The role of an elected councillor is to promote Hyde and plan for the future. Change needs to take place in order to make Hyde a better place for our children and grandchildren. There's been talk of building a new swimming pool in Hyde for years. The people of Hyde have been given the opportunity of it being built on the Green, where there's already a hard-surface sports area and an excellent children's play area. To build a swimming pool and leisure centre would greatly enhance facilities in Hyde. Representing the citizens of Hyde and pleasing everyone is not easy. In the past, when new ideas were put forward, there were always people who objected. As has already been said, the sighting of the pavilion is one instance. The closing of St. Michael's as a place of worship and the building of a pure green has also taken place. Yet the pavilion and the tin tavern are now great assets to Hyde. There were plenty of objections to having one-way traffic in the high street and preventing traffic from and for, not allowing traffic there from eleven o'clock in the morning until three in the afternoon. What I'm asking for here this evening is for the town council to be given the opportunity to move things forward and communicate our aspirations to everyone in Hyde. Reject the motion proposed by the Deputy Mayor councillor, Paul Peacock, and give us a breathing space to communicate more widely the position of the proposed pool, the possible road and car parks needed for servicing it, and the additional leisure facilities that could be provided. This would give time for a more considerate reflection of what is likely to be a great asset to Hyde and give an opportunity for those who want the pool to be built on the Green time to make their case as well. I want a more open-minded approach as we plan for the next generation of citizens in Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remind all councillors that we have been elected to represent all of the citizens of Hyde, including children, not just the people who live around the Green. It's our duty to make sure that one of the most important events be decided by this council in the last hundred years, that is, the placement and construction of a new swimming pool and sporting venue in the centre of Hyde. This, Mr. Mayor, should be debated fully, with all information made available, so that the whole electorate be properly informed of the position, measurements, roadway safeguards, and timescale, not forgetting the reasons why some of the previous sites have been discounted, instead of various schemes and false information being bandied about by word of mouth without any real knowledge of what is actually on offer. Mr. Mayor, I cannot therefore support councillor Peacock's motion to kick the scheme into the long grass, just to pray to the gallery, without a proper debate, and until us councillors and electorate are promptly and completely informed. It could well be that after such a debate, we all decide that the Green is not the right place to put the legislation and the board. At least our children will then be able to say that we were not vindictive and selfish, and that we've tried very hard and did our best to obtain something worthwhile for their use and enjoyment in the centre of Hyde. That is why, Mr. Mayor, this motion has fallen.
Well, I hope you've all got your fishing rods, because we've had quite a lot of red herrings floating around tonight. The covenants, yes, we've heard all about the historical documentation and how sound might that one, would it be, in a court of law? Well, we don't really know, but what we do know is that the covenant doesn't matter, because the most important thing is the view of the people, and those people that have bothered to come here tonight, people we have been elected to represent, not people in the future, but we haven't yet been elected to represent, the people that are here now, the people that signed the petition, the people that sent the emails, the people that wrote the letters, the people that made the phone calls, and the people that came and visited us. All of those people, barring one person who came to me, was absolutely aghast at the thought of building on the Green. The whole message has been, "Don't build on our Green," because that's how Hyde residents have always seen it, their Green. Maybe just a scrappy green field to a few. To most, it represents an intrinsic part of Hyde's history, cherished for many, many years, and indeed, the reason why the covenants were first put in place, and the words on the plaque. It's been special to a lot of people for a long time. In 1974, when the old Borough Council ended, the twelve councillors and the four aldermen each had a tree planted in memory of the old council. Where did they have it planted? Why, on the Green, of course, because they valued its significance and they knew what an important piece of land it was to hire. Go there at dusk, watch the foxes playing, see the badgers lumber across the corner. It's their sanctuary, too. We often moan that Hyde Town Council doesn't have much actual power in local governing, or tonight we do. We can stop this now, we can stop the anxiety, the worry, and the distress to our constituents. We can keep our Green Green. Voting for this motion does not end the dream of a new pool for Hyde. It does, however, end the dream of Shephway stealing a very significant piece of land. Others have spoken about traffic, so I won't duplicate their thoughts. Just don't catch those red herrings on your fishing rods, because the simple answer tonight is to support the motion, and you will still get a swimming pool.
On the 2nd of November 2015, members of Hyde Town Council received an email from a town clerk attaching a report that had been received and considered by Shephway District Council, Calum. In summary, recommendations by the cabinet were to seek a definitive response from Hyde Town Council as to the granting of access to an area on the Green, either by sale at some one pound or 125-year lease, as a suitable site on which to build the new enhanced swimming pool. It also states that the alternative site to build the pool is Princess Parade, should the application to use the Green fail. Consequently, I summarised the details from the SDC report and copied them onto Street the local social media forum, using my own name, to better inform the public of the options being considered and to encourage them to read the linked information and debate the matter. I also encourage them to contact their respective councillors to express their opinions for consideration when the matter is discussed in council. As of this morning, there have been over 200 responses to my initial post, which indicates the high level of interest in this matter. The responses have been both for and against a proposal to use the Green by SDC, with a large majority being against. Additionally, individuals' emails that Hyde have received from local residents are also split between support and rejection of the SDC proposal. The whole issue of where the new swimming pool is built should be debated in public by the councillors in this chamber and not just by local residents using social media. I'm very sad and frustrated that this motion has been submitted by councillor Peacock, seeking to shut down this debate. This is not due democratic process as I see it, and is a deliberate attempt to stifle debate within council. I want a full and open debate on the merits or otherwise of all possible sites within Hyde, including the Green, for a new swimming pool, and therefore cannot support this motion.
Well, I feel strongly that we should not support any of that...
Councillor, could you put it up to your...
I feel very strongly that we should not support any development whatsoever on any of our Green spaces, and my concern is that whatever decision is taken this evening, it will impact on the Green or on another site. Since councillor Peacock's motion was raised, this council has now received a letter from Shephway District Council, seeking that we advise them whether we are willing to release the Green for a legislative. That letter gives us until the 31st of January 2016 to respond, and we have not, as a council, considered the implications for the Green nor the knock-on effect for any other site upon which a legislature might be placed. I therefore believe it is premature to consider this motion without discussing how a decision to reject councillor Peacock's proposal would impact on Hyde nor our wish to replace the swimming pool. If we vote to accept councillor Peacock's motion, then the question is, where do we wish the pool to be built? What about any other implications such that the likelihood of building 36-plus houses on another open space to fund the new pool? Such an outcome would be totally unacceptable in my view. That could well be inevitable, an inevitable result. These matters are addressed in Shephway's letter that we are not this evening discussing, but are extremely relevant. Councillor Peacock, my preference would be for councillor Peacock's motion to be deferred, so that we can discuss it fully in its context, in its current context, which is to address the delivery request from Shephway. Otherwise, we will have predetermined the outcome without any discussion. Finally, I came here this evening with the view that I was unwilling to support building on the Green, provided we address the impact of our decision. If, however, we fail to discuss the matter accordingly, I, on the ground that it is premature, I will be going to against this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do the people of Hyde want a swimming pool or not? Do we want a new facility for recreation for young and old or not? Do we want to encourage our local swimming club, which trains many of our youngsters and enables them to compete with their peers around Kent, or not? If you ask this question to the people of Hyde, the vast majority will say, "Yes, we do. We do want a pool, with all the benefits that it will bring to young and older alike." The problem is, where to build it? From public responses to date, it seems that yet again, NIMPIism is alive and well and thriving in Hyde. Yes, we all want it, but not in our own backyard. The current pool is well past its sell-by date, and yet again had to be closed this summer for immediate works. These works were funded from our council tax, and unless something is done soon, the point will inevitably be reached when further expenditure cannot be justified and the pool will be closed. Do we want this? Do we care? Redevelopment of the existing site is just not viable. Swimming alone doesn't produce enough revenue. It needs to be linked with other sporting uses, such as a gymnasium or sports hall. To provide the required car parking and sufficient housing development would need an enormous block of flats on that site that would be completely out of place. So sadly, I believe we have to forget that position, although at the outset, I very much supported redevelopment on that side. Turning to Nichols Quarry, I will remember, as others have alluded earlier on, the uproar when this development was proposed some nine years ago. How would the town cope with a thousand new homes? And why build a pool there, which would be too far from the centre of the town and on the outskirts rather than in the centre? As we know, nine years have passed, and it is only now that infrastructure works are taking place. The 106 funding critical for development will only become available when the housing development is well underway and homes are being bought...
Councillor, can we go back on to the Green bit? I don't want you getting involved in other areas of discussion.
Mr Mayor, of course, I'll be led by you, but I think it is important to center the overall scene because this is what the debate is all about. It's not just a yes or no. As with all things, the delivery of new pool comes down to money. And a key factor in any development is ownership of the land on which it is situated. Princess Parade has the strong advantage that it is owned already by Shephway and acquisition costs are nil. I have to say that I've always been personally concerned about any development on that site due to the contamination issues with the building of a former refuse to be closed in the early nineteen seventies, at a time when we didn't care what we put in the ground. Nobody knows precisely what is buried there. And latest indications seem to suggest that cleanup of this site would be more expensive than first thought. Do we say, to hell with the expense, clear out the pollution and let's get on with it? Or do we look for an alternative site that is affordable, deliverable in the short term, has no pollution problems, is not adjacent to an ancient monument such as McNamara, has no potential sea over-topping issues? The Green is a much-valued facility in the centre of our town and we are all aware of the covenant that exists. It's a very large piece of land and it concerns me that from many of the emails that I have received, there is an assumption that SDC will want to buy or lease it all. That is patently not the case, and if it were, I would certainly not break for it. Equally, I would not agree a sale of any land, but perhaps discuss a lease arrangement at a market rent that could be used for the good of the town. Perhaps a much-needed new toilets on the Green, often talked about but never been delivered. The plot of land in question is adjacent to industrial places to south and west. It's in part of the Green where there is no playground. It is not used for circuses, funfares or big fairs. I believe that access issues via St Nicholas Road do give major cause for concern. Perhaps access via a rotten stretch of Saint Paul's Avenue for two-way traffic with the road powering the sun. Would be an appropriate alternative.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, I let councillor Owen carry on, please. I mean, after all, this campaign speaks so far, let councillor Owen carry on, please. He's entitled to his own opinion, as we all are. Thank you, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sure that what I'm saying, as has been evidenced, is not going to be popular with people here this evening, who are anxious to put their opposition to Green across. But what about the many who do support a new pool on the Green?
Where are they?
Yes, they do exist. And may just, may just be the silent majority. Sometimes, when you elect your councillors, you have to accept that they will not do exactly as you wish. They are not automatons programmed to follow the wishes of those who shout loudest, but are responsible individuals who seek to represent the majority of our residents by using their best efforts for the development of our wonderful town of Hyde. Mr Mayor, I have read every email that has been sent to me by HDC office and listened carefully to the statements made this evening. As things stand at the moment, I will vote against the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Rees.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, for being able to speak. I have read these numerous emails. I have only come here with one brief petition, as to listening to the people. There are so many people who are against this. When I was walking around campaigning, I promised that everybody, I will listen to your views and I will put your views forward, which is exactly what I'm going to do tonight. It's evident that we need further discussion on this because the timescale is incredibly fast. It's been a couple of weeks that we've got to this stage. There are other sites, but we have to have a mutually agreeable site, which is mutually agreeable to the town, mutually agreeable to the people and to the councillors. I feel that we need further time. So I am not prepared to vote to put the swimming pool on the Green at this moment in time until we get further knowledge and further information. And lots of information has to come, like especially the road structure. Saint Paul's Avenue is a very busy road anyway. So on the basis, I'm listening to the people and maybe, it may be difficult for me, but I am not going to vote this and I'm going to go along with councillor Peacock and reject this idea for the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Master Sun. Hi, I'm going to keep this short. I believe I was elected to represent the people who vote for me, so I am going to take their views into account in the way I vote. I always, and I take into account the fact that we've, I've been approached with the petitions that have been sent and the individual emails by over three hundred people. And I haven't actually had one person contacting me that's actually in favour of a leisure centre in the Green. So, but I will continue with the people in the organisation I belong to to support the fact that we should protect all green spaces.
If we also wish to pack another councillor's message.
If we also wish to pack another councillor's message. Thank you. First of all, thanks for giving us all the opportunity to listen to what you've all said. It's always very interesting and the whole of emails has been spectacular. There's two things that concern me about this motion. One is that by passing it, we do, as some have been saying, restrict any further debate as to whether or not this is right or wrong, yes or no, whatever. There is also another further complication and that is that within our standing orders, actually, it does say that if there is a financial implication to anything, we should actually take this forward to the Finance and General Purposes Committee to discuss these particular aspects of it. And I think this motion strangles that particular motion within the council abroad. So I will not be in favour of that. Thank you.
No, we haven't actually said, have your word, apologies, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you everybody for being here. Sometimes you're not the most popular person in the world if you say things and I suspect I won't be. The fact is, this motion is a killing motion. I think it's a disreputable motion. It shouldn't have been brought forward at this stage only from the point of view that there is planning application in, there's a debate and plans of works, there's a financial element. And whereas ultimately, the decision may very well be not to do anything with regard to the Green, I think that there should be a debate. I respect everybody's view here and there are two hundred and fifty people on a petition and it's been got together very quickly. However, this is a town of sixteen and a half thousand people. The facility we're talking about is a facility of twelve million pounds. It will provide a twenty-five metre pool, a twenty metre training pool, a gymnasium, a sports hall. The present pool has broken its bite. It's, needs a million pounds spent on it within the next two years if it's to stay here. The district may very well determine to close it. New Romney would like the pool. And every time we've had a debate on this, New Romney has put their hand up and said, please put it here. Are you going to travel to New Romney? I don't know. I've always advocated the present site. I was very upset to find that we can't have a twenty-five metre pool on the present site. I've opposed in a lot of ways the idea of Princess Parade and Martello Lake is too far down the line, two hundred odd houses, probably under five, six years. There are problems on each and every site that's being discussed. So it's really a case of looking to what we can do by way of debate. I would invite the proponents of this motion to withdraw it for the time being. If it looks as standing orders, if six councillors chose to do so, they can come back within six months and seek to set it aside. So there needs to be a debate, there needs to be democracy. And it may very well be that the views of the Peacock Gallery will come forward and persuade councillors that it's not right to build on the Green. There isn't an intention to do anything but use a small part of the Green if that were the case. I've had people say to me, well, why can't you bring me forward to the front where the triangle of land is bisected by the path between the Duke's Head and the Bridgerton Bridge? That would have the advantage of incorporating the potential for the car park, Portland Road as a car park for it. It would have the service of its main access point. There are arguments against using the Green and those arguments are very much, it's a green lung, you can stand there and see the sun rising or whatever odd setting. You can look across to the other parts of the area and it's a very beautiful area. But we do have to think, does this town want a swimming pool? Because if it doesn't, then I suspect the swimming pool will go elsewhere. And to lose the facilities that we've had in the past, like the prospect of a marina, like the prospect of other aspects. If we hadn't held to our guns in regard to the pavilion, we wouldn't have a facility that's used for two hundred and fifty people and life. So only, and I say only on the basis that I don't like the way this has been rolled forward. I would feel that it should be voted down and let us have a debate. Let us decide on the part of the people of Hyde, what is best for the people of Hyde, with the people of Hyde explaining to us their views. And I go back to another controversy on the Green. In nineteen sixty-six, when there was a dispute about there's no car park on the Green, the then councillor, Rear Admiral D H Hall Thompson, said, I don't want anyone to think that the council is trying to grab something or trying to do something that is not for the good of Hyde. And another councillor, and I hear a lady called Bond tonight, councillor Bond, said it was ironic, but when the council tried to drag Hyde into the era of the horseless carriage, they should meet with opposition. So I, I understand, I really, really do understand the sentiments that are being put forward by people who are, I suspect, frightened, who don't want something like this near them. It may be that those fears are right and that it would affect their lives to the degree that the pool should not go there. And I'm perfectly happy to accept that that may be the argument. But what I'm not happy to do tonight is to accept something that, as councillor Smith has said, strangles the debate because we represent every one of you, but we also represent another fifteen and a half thousand people in town. And there was a referendum about the community hall on the Green. Seven hundred people voted in that referendum, seven hundred out of fifteen and a half thousand at the time. And of those seven hundred, there was a narrow majority against the decision. Now, it possibly is right, that might be told to each other. Right, thank you very much. So please, please recognise the reason why I'm going to vote against this and I have made my decision tonight, I've listened to the debate and listened to the various councillors making this point. I take that point, I want a debate, we can have another issue here when we know all the facts. If it can't work out, then the decision of Shephway at the moment through cabinet is it goes up to Princess Parade. But I want a pool for Hyde. It has got to be on Princess Parade and it can be and it will be there. Nichols Quarry, I think, is, and I'm arguing with everybody, is too far down the line. So thank you very much.
All councillors, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've listened to the debate, I came here tonight with an open mind. But I was listening to Mr councillor called Peacock's proposal. I think if we agree with that tonight, unfortunately, that puts the end of the debate. And I do think we need to go into this further before we cover all our losses. And then, because I have been elected councillor now for nearly nine years and in those nine years, we have been promised a swimming pool for Hyde. We still have not got a swimming pool for Hyde. And I think if I vote for this motion tonight, unfortunately, I don't think it's going to happen. So I will be voting against this motion tonight.
Pardon, councillor, this might have been. Now, we've had all the arguments, opposed and cons, for and against. What people want to think about, in my opinion, is that how long has this debate gone for? It's been very long since I've been a councillor, I've been a councillor for fourteen years. What I find very interesting is the fact that in all what councillor Newt James said about West Parade and East Ward and South South and Nichols Quarry. Yes, we've had petitions before and people have known that not on our doorstep. In all the years I've been a councillor, I have never known this razor hornedness as it has today. It is quite extraordinary, I can't keep up the emails I've had. I'm always on top of everything. And it's quite extraordinary that we have this debate tonight. Now, I believe that we, it's your choice, obviously. We all have our own conscience. I always listen to the people, whether I agree with them or not. They ask my opinion and they come very kindly to tell me what they want. And you have to listen to the people who vote you in. At your head or not at your feet if you don't. The point is, like everything else, we do have an opinion and we do have a way of expressing our opinions. But we've all had our say this evening. Everybody's been extremely polite, thank God for that, and also been an listener. I know that people don't agree with everything everybody says, but they have a right, as I said before, to their opinion. Now, I think I probably sell my little bit. Councillor Peacock, would you like to sum up, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we've all had, well, most of us had our, had a debate. And I find the opinion of some, some of the local councillors, quite extraordinary. We go back, we go to Mr Dearden about how many people were actually voting the town. I mean, we never get sixteen thousand people voting in a general election or any election. So that's a bit of a red herring. I mean, we was elected by a certain amount of people and we was asked to support those people that elected us. And that is what I've been asked to do. I was, I've been contacted by over a hundred people through over emails and in the street. And I, I, I thought that the people, well, this, this council would actually think that we would keep the Green space instead of giving it to Shephway for no money. The other, the other two, a couple of things is councillor Armin said, do we want a pool? I mean, that's, that's, that's a red herring. We know that, that there's two other places. Was, was mentioned well long, a long time before the Green ever become an option. And one already had permission for it to go on. It's sad that it's taken so long to build, but they are building on it now. So I find that, you know, a bit of a strange one. Going to councillor Bellcourt. Over the hundred people I've had, not everyone's been around the Green. That, that's a, I mean, they've come from all over the town to speak to us, to, to view their points and say, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we prepared to sell off a piece of land that I go on there in the morning, noon and night, speak to people, we've seen the civic society use it during every other year, Venetian fate have it. We have the monster truck people go down in that area to keep that away. We have the monster truck people go down in that area, have to keep that away. You know, that's a bit of a, say, like councillor Peacock said, Mr Peacock said, a red herring. So I'm sorry. I was hoping that, say, you would support my motion tonight so that the Green is not destroyed. But I feel that this motion is going to be lost and everyone will be sad.
Well, councillors, it's now time for the vote. This is a recorded vote. And it's either for the motion or against. And you're in for a second chance, so councillor, do you actually call or hold these?
Councillor Wendy Peacock. Councillor Dearden. Councillor Ewan James. Councillor Bellcourt. Councillor Owen. Councillor Molyneux. Councillor Maslow. Councillor O'Connor. Councillor Myles. Councillor Paul Peacock. Councillor Gavris. Councillor Sullivan. Councillor Shipton. Councillor Mayne. Councillor Smith. Councillor Lyre.
Well, that motion, it falls 10 minutes to 6. So we have, that motion's been lost. All right, now ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of this session. I'm going to call a break for the moment. If you wish to stay for the rest of the meeting, please do, it's more than welcome. If not, we'll have a break in about five minutes.